Oh, yes, by the way. Okay. But then. And then. Not your role. So. But I had. And now. Maybe that's. There it goes. So now. So you can hear. And we're going down. Of course, you have these. My time. I only have one. Have you heard what I mean? Yeah. Despite the fact. You much. How many of us? How many? We all know. And. Yeah. That's what I'm hoping for. But. Now. It's. I think. There. So. Obviously, I used to. But I was like, oh. Yeah. In. So. But you're. And so. And doing something. And we can add a stage. Thank you. You have. Me. So. Like. We make. And. I have this. It's good. This is. My work. This is. Uh. First. The morning. What is our. Part of all of this? So. People. Oh. Uh. We got a boost. Yeah. Yeah. What's there? Good thing. Yeah. Hard on you. Oh, wow. Good night.
Morning. Thank you for being here. This is the workshop. May I say, I'm prepared for four. Right there. August 19th, 2020. 10:30. 4:00 AM. We are. Good appreciation. Thank you, Matt. Eric. And. The. I think all the workshops for. Uh. For the others here. I guess I will start off. Mr. Mountain, if you would like to.
Thank you.
Just start us off. You might want to introduce Mr. Bass.
Art. Thank you, Judge. Uh. Thank you, Judge. Just fellow commissioners. Uh. As you know, we've been working with subdivision for quite a long time. I want to introduce you. If you didn't meet our attorney, Mr. Bob Bass. Uh. Last time, he is. He is our attorney out of Austin. Uh. He flew up this morning to be with us. Uh. We. Tim, uh, Mr. West, and I've had a conference call with Mr. Bass. This, uh. Last Wednesday. And for about two and a half hours, we went over, uh. Uh. The whole subdivision regulation, uh, and your recommendations. That you have submitted to us. So it's been two and a half hours on the phone going over those. We helped. Uh. Made some. Suggestions and revisions, but I want to share those with you. I've got. I've got a few copies of this. And then I've got like one, two. I've got five copies. Of this. Somebody wants to. Look. Look at this. If we go through this. Judge.
First, which one is this?
That's the main.
Okay, I've got.
You've got a copy, do you? Okay, everything's up. Yeah. Here is. Here is a copy of. If you didn't have a copy of. Here's some of your recommendations. I mean, if y'all didn't. That's what you recommend. I'm trying to get all that. Here's what you have written. And, uh. There you go. There you go. There. If you want. If you got it out. You're ready. There's a big part of it. These recommendations. Okay. Bob, if you want to. Go ahead and start.
Let me, uh. All right, is everybody ready?
Yep.
I, uh. Want to express my appreciation to the members of the committee for the time that you all stand in your recommendation. And I tell you that I find some of them. All of them certainly in. In good spirit of cooperation. And I appreciate the insight and the effort and. The process. I would like to perhaps. Start with the letter that I was provided that stated, I believe. Um. July the 7th. Pull that down.
Is that part of what we've been handing? Who sent that letter? Did you send the letter out? Single letter?
It's signed by.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right. Okay. It's dated July 31st.
Right.
And it has 32 notes. I'm not going to. What I did is I took that, created a red line, uh, from the original draft that we discussed the last time I was here. Just put those changes into that document. That's not necessarily to mean that I necessarily agree with you and everything, but it's just. I put it into a red line version so that we would have a document to work off of. After today, it's my hope that the things that the commissioner, uh, that are here think that they can agree to, that you recommended. And there are several things that we agreed to. I say we. That I recommended. We'll get into that in a minute. But my intention is after today to come back and do a second red line with sort of the consented to matters included. And some of the things that we may not be able to agree to, omitted. And then get that back to your committee for a final sort of walkthrough. And then we will schedule, uh, and republish another notice, public notice to comply with the statutes. And that's my game plan going forward from today. Uh. So I'm not going to go through because they're already incorporated into the red line. Hopefully you have that. What I'm going to do today, where I make no comment. And I was. The comments are flagged by a little box. And I thought I could print those comments out. But I had trouble with it. Got into my office, uh, yesterday, and I had trouble with it. So I didn't forward that on, but I can discuss it with you from my notes. And then I'd be glad to provide you those comments in writing if that's your preference. So. Let's go then to the red line, uh, revision. And it's, uh. It has the Van Zandt subdivision regulations effective as of July 8th struck through. Because that was. We had it on the agenda last time I was over here. We didn't adopt anything. So that's where we start. Everybody that needs a copy of that, have a copy of that. Okay. Uh. Going. Moving down through that, uh. The index is struck through because a lot of that will need to be revised. When we get down to the body of the document, we start on page five. Uh. There's no changes. The first editorial suggestion is on basically formatting on page, uh. Guess that would be page seven.
Yes.
And then the first point of on, uh. Comment. Is on, uh, page eight. And with the definitions of a plat under F. And that's highlighted. On my computer, I think it's probably shaded on here. Is everybody there? The committee recommended a change in the definition. Uh. Or in the description there, uh, to be recorded, the plat must. And it sets out four items. My comment was that. Use of the term parent track. Though that section comes out of chapter 232.001 as a legislative description. I'm not personally comfortable with changing that legislative description. Legislature told us what needs to go in the plat. And has used, uh, locate the subject or the subdivision with respect to an original corner of the original survey, of which it is a part. That language is that was struck through is the original language. And your suggestion, the committee's suggestion, to make that read the original corner of the legal description of the parent track. I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of difference, but here's one thought. I would prefer just to stick with legislative language where legislative language is cited or used. For the reason that parent track is not defined in the statute. I understand what a parent track is. It's where you have an original piece of property and you subdivide that original track. And that original track may be described, and it's the two, an original abstract, but it might not. And so the legislature really contemplates, I think, that subdivision be tied to an original corner. Original meaning the first time it was carved out of the Virgin Grant. Usually described in an abstract. So that's my concern about substituting that language. I'd like any comments or questions about that. Yes.
Uh. On what that's. Do that. Slack. And your parent track, when you talk about parenting does. Oh, something through, through, through the debt on recreate. And if we had to recreate that abstract and tie it to the original abstract corner. There's going to be a debt that burdening going on, on the survey cost and everything like that. I've been doing class thirteen. I'm a multi-studenter. I've been doing class over thirty-five years. I'm tying it to the parent track that is in the subdivision track that it's in. Now, I, I, I tie the record monumental dignity. Record monumental dignity is, it's called having a deed that served a corner and all that. I tie that. And if the state board does have it, you need to have it in record monumental dignity. Dignity. You just try to find an iron rod somewhere that doesn't have one dignity. But if you're asking to go to the pack. Uh. Really, now, I tell us need to do a survey on that. And that's a, that's a state order. Uh. Let's say. So I think you're going to be putting a great burden to the public on that. I do the outside class, and I don't touch the outside front of two thousand dollars. They've got so much burden to their class. People out here, they, they get that kind of some of that. And now, I'm looking to try to shut up to three lots. You know, sell off. But. My suggestion is, is that probably with the time of the original abstract forms. You, you don't find enough of them around. Some of us are registered here that, that. And that's about. So. Uh. My, my way, thank you. You're the best.
Well, and I hear you. I'm not. I understand, but the statute says the corner of the original survey of which it is a part, said it plat must. So when the legislature uses must language or shall language, that's directly. I don't know that I have the prerogative as a lawyer to craft an ordinance by the local jurisdiction that would supersede the statute.
I don't even think that, no.
Here.
Uh. Could you indicate where original survey is defined as meaning the original patent from the SAW? Uh. As opposed to the original survey of.
Of that track. And it just says original survey. And I'm not a surveyor. I'm not. You know, I've, I've read a lot of surveys, but they usually tie it to an original corner when it was first carved out of, of the ground.
But I, I believe that there are, uh. Information from our surveyors is that that is actually not the current professional surveyors. And, and, and I could not find anywhere in the statute where original survey is defined as meaning the patent from the SAW. And so the purpose of our suggestion was to clarify that, in fact, it was not asking for the original patent from, you know, Spanish or Republic of Texas, or whatever it was. Uh. And in fact, is in line with the standards that are currently used by licensed surveys.
Well, like I say, I'm not necessarily saying that parent track. And original survey are necessarily different corners. You know, they may be the same corner. I just, I'm hesitant to use language that's not in the statute when it is directory language. That's my concern. Now, I, I could possibly agree or recommend that there be in the definition of original corner, something like your parent track law.
That, I mean, that, that's the goal. It is so that the regulation is clear that it doesn't require someone to find a 300-year-old monument. Uh. And in fact, is, is looking for the, the corner of, of what the most recent survey that we have of the, the track that's being.
Well, I hear what you're saying. As long as you're referring to a quarter that's a monumented quarter, I mean, it's a. I.
Right. It's. Then his boss goes out there and surveys the boundary. And I go out there and survey that, and he's got all the trip and every kind of onset that's boss. I use that because that's got recognition in that trip, that monument. And that's what state order, the red frame. If you want recognition on the court.
All right, question. Have you ever tattooed in that original abstract corner in the plat? In West Texas? Or in West? If you know one here, if you try to go to the drop for down.
Wait, sir. Like this is not being taken out. Forty-nine. Tell me. And I'm not. Where did this guy get on the original survey? When he still standing and waiting, but a stamp on it and said, wait that name. This is the original survey.
I don't know what you're.
I never done one family because it's standing. I'm sitting.
Not going to tell war stories all day, but I was involved in a lawsuit between Denton and Parent Dallas County's a few years back over their boundary. And we actually went out to try to reprice the original survey and found one, hold our coast from eighteen. This was a subsequent re-survey. I think it was 1876. That, so I mean, they're very rare to find original one. I understand. Uh. Is if we use a definition in the definition section for original survey and use your language, is that okay? Or make it clear that we're not requiring original corners of original abstract?
And that, that was the committee's intention, was to clarify that we're not looking for the. Uh. Most recent one.
Good. All right. The next suggestion that you make is you struck, again, statutory language that's in the new revised chapter 232. Subsection I that required a digital map to be provided as part of the application. Here's how I would make my comments. Surveyors and engineers do their survey and typically have the capability to produce such a map while they're doing their work. Uh. There is an exception in the statute that says if an exemption is provided, if the owner of the track submits with the application an acknowledged statement indicating that a digital mapping technology necessary to submit a map, it implies that this subsection is not reasonably accessible. So it, it's not mandatory, but it's recommended. Why is it recommended? Well, that way you can take that digital data to the appraisal district, to 911 rural addressing coordinator, and you can more readily and easily get that digital map into those databases. So that their functions are easier to do. And so there is an exception in the statute. So I personally would prefer and recommend we leave that in because unless you're still doing your surveys, you know, old timey way, I'm doing a digital map. And if you're doing it that way, that's fine. You can certify that we don't have the technology.
If, if, if we may, the, so the statutory provision says commissioners' court may adopt. It's not a mandatory rule in the statute for a plat to be reported. So it's, so it's up to y'all. But our understanding is, committee's lives, that currently the county doesn't have the technology to maintain these digital. Uh. And so to us, it might exist at this time for the county to adopt a rule that says that developers need to give us records that, that the county keep. And if at some point in the future, the county develops a system by which that is done, then, then a future commissioners' court could adopt that rule and require that, that digital maps be, uh, submitted. But what, you know, one, one of our philosophies was instead of adopting rules that have exceptions to them, and we all have an understanding that this exception is going to apply. If we're, if we're not intending to use them at this time, then we don't see the benefits to the county to putting that into law. Uh. You know, it, it may very well be that at some point in the future, we have a digital database here in the county, but it just doesn't exist right now. And I'm not, I don't.
Well, I think.
Does the appraisal district have a, a digital?
Yeah. Mr. West, and I discussed this, and yeah, there, there is. The appraisal is definitely has digital capability. And so, uh, to me, uh, with the exception in there, I don't see a problem with the way the statute set up.
Well, it, it. If the exception says that if the owner submits an acknowledged statement indicating, uh, that the technology is not reasonably accessible. Uh. It, it is, it is possible. It is, it is just expensive. And for the, it will always be reasonably accessible for surveyors. And, and it just takes them spending a lot of money and it takes the developers. And so that, that. If, if, if commissioners at this time adopt something with the intention that it's, uh, it's going to be accepted, you know, for, for the near future. I, I, I can see that setting up a conflict. There's chains in the competition. And, and a new commissioners' court comes in and says it's reasonably accessible there. Um. So, so, so again, that's just what, what the committee's thoughts were on that. I'll stop speaking.
Uh. True. Brother, if I submit something to you digital, let's say if we were too digital. We're going to. I can give it to you, and like I said, now with the abstract office right now, I don't even want you to. I ask for. I don't want you to take on my data. At least I got to do the version file. I'm not certain if, um, competitors are using the same version file. But we can probably give her something. But if I give it to you, what do you get? Because our county court doesn't have the ability to, that I know of. The same software in there. Download it, put it in the computer, kind of copy it, and then we'll, 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 exactly, get a copy of the plat, they go over that. Now, Kaufman currently has this visual format. But they've already, what we've run into initially is I submit a plat to you. If. I can put my science, my signature, seal it. But how do you get the judge to sign? So what they found is now we've got a little issue. It's out of it. Print it out there. But the judge's not, he doesn't try to criticize. They were permitted to an ETJ. Now we need to take it over and get the suit. They don't need to place in because it's supposed to be a digital format. In order, and so people die. The whole idea sounds great, but it's just a matter of everybody having the software and everybody figuring out what format to use. Uh. I mean, it's in a PDF format, and it seems to be the most developed around now. Is that what everybody's going to use? They have a way of securing. But you said what we're saying is what we can't, we want to know something. How are we going to communicate right back? What we're trying to do from a class to. Our clerk.
Well, the plat, the plat itself, the paper, the hilar plat will still be filed in paper or hilar form, signatures. It goes in the plat.
But you want both.
Want both. And, and, and as it says, the digital format that we're wanting you to comply with is one format. It's that if you buy the appraisal that's required. Well, candidly, once the subdivision is approved, it's lodged, been sold, all of that is going to have to be entered into their database for taxing purposes.
But if they have a GI system, it's not available.
Well, then you file, then you file, the affidavit, it's not reasonably accessible, you're exempting. But ideally, you know, I don't. I use, uh. Ezri for redistricting and stuff, Ezri products. You can convert that into virtually any format. And I think PadCam does the same thing. It's just a matter of telling it what format you wanted. And what, what, uh, you know, the projections are, you know, what is it? NAD or 87? Is it, you know, 29? I don't know, whatever, whatever you use, but it goes into the, the, the format that the appraisal district uses. So it really makes, it's really for taxing purposes, if we can.
You don't have to. And you don't have to turn around and then just.
No, sir. There's an exemption. If you don't have it, you're exempt.
Yeah. Yes. You don't have to. You don't have the software, and then you just file the affidavit. Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for, I think, keeping this, keeping this in there. But we can, we can say, we can move forward.
Okay. Uh. Moving on down. The next note that I have. Is on page nine specifically about an exemption for subdivision that contain not more than four tracks and with which no improvement or construction. Uh. The. 232 has an exemption. Section 232. It's two thirty-two. Oh, oh, one, five exemption to plat requirements in subsection K two, the county may not require the owner of the tract of land located outside the limits of the municipality that could divide its tract into two or more parts that had a plat appear. If the owner does not lay out part of the tract as described in two thirty-two, oh, oh, one, eight, three, roads, parks, so forth. And all parts are transferred to post to person to own with undivided interest in the original tract and plat is filed before any further development of any part of the tract. Now, that's kind of hard to understand, but I think that covers what you're asking for there. And in two thirty, or one point, three point one, you have the discretionary exemption that allows that. So it seems to me that that's, and that exemption in K is carried over into H of the local revs, so it seems to me that that's already there. If it's not gonna develop it, but you're dividing it into no more than four parts, that would probably be exempted already?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't that say that it's only if the parts transferred to people who own an undivided interest in the tract already, that's to divide the land that's on my local co-towners?
Right.
What the committee was suggesting was that, that it may be in folks' interest to have an exemption for someone, I think the example was grandma wants to sell off the land to pay us. It was, so that's, that's a different exemption than what the committee.
And you don't think the discretionary exemption covers that?
Well, no, that's inherently discretionary, so this would, this would be a recommendation of having a blanket exemption.
What happens if a grandma wants to sell off, she's got thirty acres, and she wants to keep the homestead of two acres, sell the rest to some Joe Blow, and Joe Blow's intention is to develop it later?
That falls under a different exemption.
Falls under a different exemption, but then they say Joe Blow comes in and says, well, I've got four lots, I'm not gonna build any roads, they all front on a highway. I don't think I need to have to go through a plating process. And the court can grant that exemption, but what happens if it's in a floodplain? Or if it may have some other feature that causes some concern on the part of the court?
There will be additional market forces at play, if that's.
I will be honest with you, I'm reluctant to grant blanket exemption where the statute hasn't given. That's my, I've done these enough to know that every time you, my mom always told me, no good deed goes unpunished. Every time I've, every time I've cut some slack, I've come to, I say every time. Most every time I've cut slack in lawsuit or in a dispute, I've come to regret having been flexible. And I hate to be that way. But in trying to represent counties who get confronted all the time with, what are you gonna do about my road? Well, it's, it's your road, it's not our road. What are you gonna do about my drainage? Well, it's your drainage, it's not the public drainage. There's just all kinds of stuff. And I use stuff as an abbreviation for a shorter word that comes to this commissioners' court all the time. People wanting the public to get them out of their problem. And I hate the sound that way. That's me talking, not these guys. I'm trying to protect them from that. So that's my concern, but it's up to them if they want to grant a discretion similar, an exemption similar to what I've articulated in the discretionary exemption as a regulatory exemption under the local rule. Yes, sir.
I mean, obviously, issues making sure there's some checklist that is developed right now. I know what is expected of that type.
There is a checklist that needs to be revised, but there is a checklist that I provided to the county, and I don't know if it didn't get.
We got some copies of the checklist here, but we've always had a checklist. That, you know, you come in and got a copy of it before, we got, got the checklist now. This is checklist here is in more detail. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that there was. Uh, I've got a, I'm going to the lot. I went to get in, and they got, it was water out there, they got, oh, in the sewer or everything. It was, uh, water. They can't do any one fifteen more things, so it would can't go. So what I'll have to do with my people now is say, make sure you got adequate water, everything. That's something that needs to go on these, uh, places. Go ahead, people come out here and buy a large amount of sand, and they're gonna be able to cut it up into the tracks. And, uh, I just saw a paper the day before yesterday, it's a good one that was fifteen more. It was shut down.
Water's becoming a problem, and that's, we have water availability provisions in the regulation. Um, but, uh, the county cannot assume their responsibility to make water available, so we want a plat notation that says the county's not representing that water is available. And that's up to the developer. But we'll get to that in a moment, but it's a valid point. Any other questions or comments, and I don't know if we need to. Like I say, I'm a little bit reluctant to add in a step, a, a regulation exemption similar to what's in the discretionary exemption, but that's up to the court. I, you know, I don't mind if they want to do it, I just think that there may come up a, a situation with, well, after that, poor lot development didn't require any improvements, that was statutorily or regulatorily exempted. And then something goes haywire on it, and the constituents who bought the lot come and beat these guys up because they said it was exempt, doesn't need a plat, but yet every time it rains, water comes in my back door and floods my kitchen or floods my house. They're gonna, these guys are gonna catch the plat for it, not the developer that built that lot in it and sold that lot in subdivision. My thought should have been perfect.
And I appreciate where we are so far, but we have enough time. We did one page, two items, basically, third item, forty, forty minutes, we got seventy pages.
I can go as fast as you want me to go.
Okay. I want to go some more, but we continue in detail. And that is that this strength that we have kind of reset and not repeating what we did, uh, in October of, of two thousand eighteen. And we want to work thoroughly through this and get multiple stakeholders to get better results, county residents, developers, and vice versa. In our opening page of the recommendations, appreciate you overriding previous documents. Redline version, what it looks like. The opening thing we recommended, I'm concerned about not being addressed back. The statements made said that we have this redline today, we're gonna work through it until we can. We're gonna have a second redline and try to prove. I do not believe that is reasonable to do the thorough job that we need to do. And I do not see the rush to accelerate those processes at this point. When you all charged us on July the eighth, after that, of the dorms, with the committee, with the board, we met, and you gave us a redline. We met twice, we were very effective, the time that we had. We still need us additional stakeholders, the second meeting, we did have one. That helped us greatly. But there's others we believe ought to come in and have a part of this process. That's why we request a ninety day window, I think it would plenty of time to, uh, and, and everyone who's on, maybe that's happened, you did, are willing to spend your time and do a thorough job of this. So I really would like to have that addressed. Are we gonna have the opportunity to do that? Are we not? Do we have to blow through this today so we get our second redline and a final approval or not?
No, Bob, we, we, we're not gonna rush, rush you on this. We had made a determination, but I know we discussed it. You know, Mr. West and I have been on this committee, representative course, so we have discussed this. And there's really, we don't have a timeline on this. I mean, if, if you need ninety days, well, well, I'm sure we'll give you ninety days. So we're not trying to rush you through this, but we are trying to get through this first redline. We do need to move along, uh, rather quickly. Uh, if we can today, just get through this first redline, this first, uh, permission of the subdivision.
I appreciate. The last comment that I had was on the private driveway definition. Has not been identified as a street. That's on, that's under a definition. What I'm looking at doesn't let me really look at. Yeah, my comment there. I've already made, said, you know, there's a statutory. My note says this is statutory language out of two thirty-two oh oh one five, I've already made this comment. The one three one discretionary exemption, uh, allows for the court to grant discretionary exemptions. And I just said, I'm, I'm reluctant to enter a blanket exemption that may be applied. So I've already made my comment, I didn't read it out of that, but that's what that comment was.
So the, the purpose of that comment is, it's unclear that two thirty-two mandatory exemptions just deal with the platting. And, and, and as these are written, it is unclear if you were doing a subdivision, that subdivision that fits one of those mandatory exemptions, as to whether that exempts you from all of the regulations that are in this document or merely the requirement that you plan. And so that's, that was the purpose of my comment, is that that needs to be clarified so that the public knows what's required.
Okay, well, the statute says that, you know, the county may not require an owner to file a plat if they fall in all the statutory exemptions, so if you're exempt, you're exempt.
Well, there's, there's the, there's requirements not filing a plat, but there's a number of other requirements with regards to construction, with regards to water sewage, you know, all of those are things that are not a plat. Plat is only the trial. The, the other things are not the plats. And so if, if you're dividing one of these things and you don't have to submit a plat versus you don't have to submit an application for subdivision, that is not as clear as it is written.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. Uh, I'm trying to avoid, but ideally, anytime you divide the land, even in, you know, two parts, you would go talk to your commissioner and say, here's what I'm planning to do. I don't think it's a subdivision, I don't think I ought to have to do any of that. Here's my statutory exemption. The court probably ought to issue some sort of exempt certification, saying, yeah, you don't have to do anything. But there's no mechanism in the statute that allows us to require that. It says that there's no plat requirement. Well, if there's no plat required, then it's not a subdivision, land that requires plat, it doesn't require plat, it doesn't require all of them standing.
Well, then that just needs to be stated because it's not.
Yeah, and I, I think I'm okay doing that, I just, uh, I'm, I'm articulating my concern. Counties can't do anything that the legislature doesn't tell them they can do. It says they're exempt from a plat, and I can screw that name, if you're exempt from the plat, you're exempt. And even saying that you ought to come in and tell us what you're doing and apply for an application, an exemption. And we grant it, that suggests, well, if you're exempt, what do you, what authority do you have to require me to do anything? But I, I, I would like that, and I don't, if you don't mind, I don't want to put that in there, I'm just saying that somebody what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna do something out there, and they say, well, I thought I was exempt. And they start selling lots off that aren't exempt, and then the county's gonna have to go file a lawsuit and join them or prosecute them for violating what's clearly not an exempt plat. And so, but I can put in an exemption certificate process if that's what you're asking for.
That, that's not right. I, I'm asking that, that be clear that, that if a subdivision meets one of the statutory mandatory exemptions, that either the entirety of these subdivision regulations do not apply to that subdivision, or only the requirements relative to plat don't apply, all the other requirements do.
Okay. We ready to move on?
Yes, sir. And then just, I, just so I'm clear, there, there is other authority that you cite for the county to regulate these other things that aren't plat. So, so it is, it is not clear from two thirty-two that if you're exempt from filing a plat, that you're also exempt from getting a will serve letter from, of water. And, and so that's the clarity that, that that, those aspects.
Well, maybe we could say. Because they got their own, they have their own forward or the second. And you don't want to give the impression to the public, I think we're trying to, we don't want to give the impression, oh, oh, well, you didn't get a plat, so you were exempt. So, we don't want to give the impression that this is a blanket exception. That makes sense? That's worth, I think, a good time.
All right. Going down to page, that's page eleven, I think we're, going down to twelve? Well, I've got one, but if, if you got, I'm looking at my computer.
Seven private driveway.
Yeah, on the private driveway coming in, on page twelve. I, I just don't intend to suggest that a driveway is a street, but it is a crossing from the public road across a drainage area into a, into a private lot or tract. And so the county has some jurisdiction over its drainage easement, so there ought to be some mechanism for driveway permit or the like. That I don't think the county president has written on. And so it may well be that we would want to use this opportunity, although it would apply outside of subdivision, that if anytime you're gonna go from the public roadway and cross the county's drainage easement into a track and need a culvert, that it be either all sorts of permutations. Sometimes the county says, well, here's our minimum standard of twenty-four foot length, and it depends on the topography as to the diameter of the pipe, but you ought to tell your commissioner you want to install a culvert, he can give you the specification, and you buy the pipe and we'll install it, or if the county doesn't want that, like, so when you notify us, we'll issue you a permit, you install it to a certain standard. Those are things that we talk about generally, but I think, I don't have opposition to this language. I just think there should be some definition in the statute, in the regulation, that tells developers what kind of entrance, if it's gonna be over a culvert, be, what they need to be, and that, right now, we don't have that.
Well, we, we do have a culvert policy.
Is it in writing?
It is in writing and signed by all commissioners. I think, uh, two thousand, maybe sixteen.
Well, we need to at least refer to it by volume and page.
Yeah, we, we have a culvert policy, if somebody wants to put in a culvert, we have to go out, select the location, and then determine the ditch line and tell them what size to put in.
Well, that's something that we can work on that end of the song.
Yeah, and I, I, we will, my intention is to get the volume and page and the minutes where that is and either bring it over intact or to refer to it, so it tells people if you're gonna install a culvert.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
But that, that's subject to change, and we're looking, we're looking at different options right now about installing culverts. Certainly not about inspecting the culvert side, telling the owner or the developer what size, but about what we do, is installing or not installing free of charge. So we're looking at different options right now.
State changes their rule, they do exactly the same thing we are now. The state requires you to get a permit from the state side to, uh, cover. Be advised, they install a culvert in the state's spectrum.
As a side, I mean, again, I'm not trying to take too much time, but, uh, we just did a culvert driveway permitting process for another county, so I mean, it, it's pretty cumbersome, candidly. Typically, in smaller counties, you just know it by your commissioner, I want to install a culvert, and he comes out, looks at it, figure out what goes in, you do it. Or, he does it, you buy the pipe, he puts it in. Or you put it in and he inspects it, and, but here's, if it's not put in right, it affects the drain, it floods or whatever. County's liable. So there needs to be some precision, but this ordinance is. Anyway, I think I don't have a deal with it, unless you have a comment, you want to go on.
Well, just, just real briefly, so the purpose for including this, and I think everybody agrees that, you know, we need some regulation culverts. It was in direct response to something that was said at the flight, maybe by, by yourself. And a hypothetical was presented in which, uh, someone laid out a path that was this definition of private drive. Response was, well, that's a road, and it will need to meet the construction requirements under this. And, and so the, the reason many things limit this definition of private drive is so that there is clarity. Um, that, that was, that was not going to be considered.
In my, a driveway goes to a single lot. If it's a, that driveway feeds to other lots, that's a road. It might go across a culvert, but if it serves one lot, it's a driveway. If it serves multiple lots, it's a road. Because that's how that everybody gets into it. And if it's a road, it's gotta be built to the subdivision setting.
So what are you saying?
Yeah, one, one of the things that, that, in my opinion, having some kind of nine-one-one addressing, approval tied to your culvert permitting process from a county standpoint would, would help in eliminating people that access their lots by driving through your ditch. And you know what the problem is. But also, another day, somebody having an acreage back there where there may be six or seven public homes, and it's accessed by that more inferior interest of that lot. And so by, by doing that, you'd be able to control your ability of granting permission for them to get their non-press as an inspection of how they're accessing the property. And to the other point, I think that by using the joint access agreement, easily, one of the pieces of property, if you have multiple lots, it's such a, a public road, you can have one driveway and several group houses in the back of the lots. And it's not a road, that, that definition causes all kinds of problems to go. DOT recognizes that when you put one, DOT enters on a FM road, you have, I've done that for lots, one instance. You know, it's all done with the joint access agreement, lots split up. It's maintained by a document that is not enclosed, expressly indicating a percentage of, of responsibility at, at drive.
Well, again, under the Elgin Bank case, which led to this report, this statute being modified, if the camp, if the, if the lots directly abut an existing public road, then there's no jurisdiction for the county to require a plat. Or, but the legislature came in and said, make what accommodations we've got here are. So if there are internal roads, and if that's, if that private drive is not a public road, and it services multiple lots, I think it falls under, it's, it's not, it's a, it's, that's a road.
Yeah, I'm talking about lots that all have front engine, not landlocked lots.
Well, yeah, I misunderstood what you.
Yeah. Never.
All right. Well, I like your idea of tying the nine-one-one to.
It's one of the recommendations that may pay, you know, that some sort of control that, that eliminates those problems that are unseen from the road. And cause problems and advantages of, you know, several people on one apartment, several people on one segment, all problems you're gonna face. It also deals with somebody who wants to cut off the four tracks to, you know, make them kind of a terrible, make them have will serve utilities. You know, somebody in a, had a, had a level that said, you know, four, four, four lots that you're cutting off. And it, the requirement would be that, that, uh, they have to go through this nine-one-one addressing. Nine-one-one is the one that says where your will serve layers, uh, anything else that you want to put in there, maybe that culvert's, uh, but that really bypasses all of the plat, it simplifies, really, I think you get away from a lot of these exemptions. I think it's a matter of being able to immediately bypass so much of the plat, and it goes straight to, here's a short checklist of what you need. And there's, there's somebody at the county that they go to, they sit down with, and, uh, you know, also, if somebody did cut something off, and the county didn't know about it for some reason, so as other people go to utilities, they get turned right back around to the people that sold it. So it's an excellent way of dealing with that and circumventing laundry problems.
Paul, can I correspond with you and get some of this language?
Certainly.
Okay, uh, I had a comment on nineteen subdivision, it's kind of, we've already talked about it. And I think that would be addressed by defining subdivision, as I had suggested earlier, but I would like to draft the language right past you and your committee.
Okay, that'd be great.
Going on down in the page.
Could I add one thing to that before we move on? I think too, that, you know, one of the things that we saw in the committee is that we felt like that there was a lot of burdensome regulation. I understand from your standpoint as attorney, you're trying to prevent situations that can get the county in the trap. And, uh, while we want that to happen too, I just don't think we're at the level of being able to create a regulation that prevents all problems. I think when you get to the level that, that counties around us, Dallas County, you know, more sophisticated counties are at, I think that's where you need that level of regulation. And I think that a lot of those regulations we're spending so much time on is, is regulation that's, that's, you know, if we find an easier way around some of that, uh, I don't think our objective ought to be to find a regulation that prevents all problems. I just don't think we're at that level yet.
And that's. This is a big puzzle. These guys don't do some problems.
No, I understand, here's a dilemma though, I mean, once an ordinance is adopted that has less regulation, that's the regulation, and then if you, if a development comes in under those regs, and it becomes a, the model of why that reg needs to be adopted, and you gotta start all over again and bring it up, and you're grandfathered, is, that problem doesn't get fixed. So you try to build a regulation, and other people's experience where these problems have come up. And so it, it's not like we're doing it solely for this, this model comes from. It's evolutionary. And, but it doesn't, it didn't start out as a, a model based on Dallas, it started out on a model based on the Sauk, which was having all kinds of growth, you know, fifteen years ago. Uh, so I mean, it's evolved over time.
And I think that that is the thought, is if we get at the level where we are today, it does evolve over time. You know, you can't create a set of regulations that are gonna be good a long period of time.
You have to periodically review them and update them, but once they're done, anything that comes in that proves unwise, that should have been anticipated, it gets grandfathered, it's the rules in place when they make the application.
I understand, but we don't live in a market world.
Yeah. Okay, let's go.
We're not gonna, we just get through this, I never question, please, we, we figure the rest of that.
So, I'm trying.
Oh, I know, I know you, I'm not playing, there's, there's so much discussion, we got other opinions today. I would like Mr. Bass, if you would just go through it. Go through it from your position, what you see in your position. And, and if you want to take notes, take notes as you can, and then, then you guys have a meeting. Again, I think, I think we're in agreement, we're not in a rush.
Yeah.
We're not in a rush. So if you.
It's just Mr. Bass, that's a good idea.
Your culvert there, it's like your position, why, let's cover all, we need to get through this. But maybe if you're, where you're coming from, then you can take it and come back with it.
All right, we're working. On page fourteen, uh, public water systems. Uh, you've struck the, uh, where no existing public water system exists. I understand, and I probably could word that differently, but you pointed out that there's already some water shortage issue. And so if you can't certify that you've got adequate water from a public supply, and there's not adequate groundwater, then candidly, the court should have to be asked to approve a subdivision plat where there's no water. But the colonialist experience tells us that that won't stop developers from building developments that don't have water, or they're built in a flipper. It happens, and so the purpose of that section is not well stated, and I apologize for that, but essentially it is, if a developer wants to come in and build more densely than Septic allows, or public water, I mean, private water wells allow, then the only way for them to do that, if they don't have an existing system, is to build one and get a certificate of convenience and assessment. Now, that is an extraordinarily expensive thing to do. But if you're gonna get the waters there, and that's what you want to build half acre lots instead of acre lots, for example, then you ought to have the prerogative to do it, but you're gonna have to do it under a regulation. Uh, and so that's why that, that section, it's not a mandatory thing. If you can't get the water, you can't get the water, but don't come to us and ask for a plat. But I can, I can modify that, but I think it needs to be in there so it gives the developer the discretion to build more dense, densely than he would be able to do under Septic, and there's no public water system available. Does that make sense? Going on down to, uh, fourteen and fifteen, subsection B, change the requirement for a groundwater availability spread to a certification from a well driller. Uh, and my comment reads. the language from this compliance with thirty Texas administrative code two thirty ought to stay in. And if the well driller can do that certification, that's fine. I'm just not familiar, candidly, and I'd be regret that I'm just not, I don't know. The groundwater availability study needs to be done for the very purpose that we're talking about. If there's not a suitable public water system, is there adequate groundwater? Buyer of the lot ought to have some knowledge. If I buy my home in that subdivision you're building on, will I have water in the foreseeable future? So I don't mind the well driller giving us that certificate. If the well driller could do it under thirty administrative code two thirty, two ninety and flipping.
We asked for a letter from the water company, water, water drillers, really. Now, we asked for a letter from them stating that this water there can provide for the settlement. Have you submitted that letter? Who you have, I mean, get me out and got that letter. I, I know he's talking about this one setting, but I don't know that these deep well drillers are going to do a study. I don't even, so that's, we, we probably need to modify that somehow as to.
Well, the statute says you're going to drill a well, you got to provide a certificate that defines what's in there under the statute. So that's all I'm asking. The well driller can do that?
I don't know that well driller can do that. We'll see.
And I've had, you know, well, drillers say, well, I can drill a hole here and not hit water. I move over a hundred feet, drill well, I will hit water. I don't know until I drill the well.
Well, that's one of the reasons I feel most bypasses the one particular deal. You don't have to use them. They, they open up all these nine ten things.
Yeah.
Just for the spirit of the law. Just studying is, I don't like what we're talking about already. In the future, water, it's already in there. It's just not as easy as it is.
Well, let me just. I'll get back to you, Paul, on that and do a little more homework on what well drillers can do. But I, there needs to be somebody that's got some credentials saying, yeah, there's going to be water in the subdivision.
Well, this will, will, will be held liable in case something happens. And, you know, there's, the study shows that there's water, but then it's.
It's damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. But I don't want the county. We're putting a notation on the plat saying, we're not making a reference. The county's not representing, you're going to have water, that's right. And, you know, there, some would say, well, that ought to be enough. Put it on the developer. But I can promise you, when those folks buy their land and build their home, and then they can't find water, they're not going to go to the developer, the developer might be gone. They're going to come here and expect.
Well, I think the example here, my daddy would say, okay, you get thirty water acres. And let's say the market says, okay, today there's thirty of that. I'm telling that, that one of the three hundred thousand, twenty, thirty acres, they're not thirty of that. I don't.
Well, I know the Israelis live in a desert and they figured out how to pull moisture out of the air. But we may get to that point in Texas. That's how the Israelis do it. Uh, let's move on. Okay, we go down into two point one point two wastewater disposal. Suggested striking the designating area is not suitable. Yeah, my comment said this section.
Fifteen.
May be covered by the previous language in that section that basically just said that the plat shall bear a notation regarding OSSF, that the design and installation apply with regulation. If you've got an OSS permit, you're probably, that, that language about designing. So I'm, I'm okay, I think, with taking that out. Because essentially that, if it's not suitable for OSSF, you won't get the permit. Right? Going on down. My mouse, but of course, I'm having to do this part. The next notation was on page seventeen under setbacks. Two point two. You inserted, separate proportion of section two point two adopting setback lines from all public roads in the county into a separate regulation to be adopted by the commission court after notice and hearing. And my comment reads, the public hearing required for approval of the subdivision should be sufficient for the setbacks contained in that regulation. The purpose of the subdivision regulation, among others, is to establish standards. And so we've taken the standards that are in chapter two thirty three for setbacks, twenty five feet on public road, fifty feet on major road. And within those twenty five and fifty foot, you can put the utilities. It seems to be unnecessary, but again, that's up to the court. I don't have a problem with having a separate setback, but it seems like it ought to be in the reg, subdivision regulation and not elsewhere. So I'd like to visit with you to see if we can reach an accommodation there. The next note, you asked to increase the ten feet that I had to fifteen feet, and I'm okay with that, certainly. And I'm okay with the fire flood language. Only, that only apply if the available water supply corporation, whatever, has adequate pressure. We can add some language to that effect. But where it is adequate pressure, firefighting seems to be something we would like to have. I understand not every rural community or subdivision is going to have water. There are provisions in the statute that if there is a certain size, but they're, in my opinion, way too big. I think it's a thousand lots. You have to have lots in the subdivision, retention lots or water storage for firefighting purposes, but we can't require it for smaller. But I don't know. Going on, infrastructure requirement for recreational vehicles, there's quite a bit of there. Like I say, we pulled this out of Bell County, may not be suitable in all of its provisions. I think the court would prefer to have a regulation that limits the number of RVs on the lot to maybe three or no more than that. I think it would want some form of a hard surface or all weather road, however we wanted to define that. But I think we can probably work through this section. But right now, that is kind of up in the air. We do recognize there's a problem of unregulated RV parts, but we don't know. I don't know if I'm speaking correctly or not. Most of what we have, we think we ought to keep. But what you pointed out, I think we can comment on. I have a big center copy and I, like I say, I pulled this out and I think we can still work through and try to make it less burdensome, but still provide public safety. Yeah. Going on through that. I have a note on two point four point D. Twenty one. Yeah, I said, the court can certainly consider a lesser standard for the construction of road, but we need to state whatever that standard is. So I'll just need to get with these guys and find out what their concerns are. I think we want enough room for emergency vehicles to operate firefighting equipment and ideally for vehicles to pass each other in opposite direction. And turning radius is adequate to allow fifth wheels in the light to move around with these things. That probably means more than twenty feet, but maybe not more than twenty four feet in some sort of permanent or something that will support a fire truck if one needs to get in in wet weather. Going down to page twenty five. You all entered, increase the depth to sixty inches below grade. And I think every court, high conversation commissioners, they're happy with thirty six. I'm not sure what the committee wanted to accomplish by going to.
What made an engineer that? Oh, that was, makes sense.
Well, it makes sense if we're going to make everything.
Yeah, like thirty six.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty is a little much. It's pretty deep.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, as it goes under a road, it makes more sense for it to be a little deeper. But thirty six is probably good, but you're going to have a low spot in it in the pipe. It's always going to have some pressure on it. And so I, I think thirty six is okay for us. Now, the next, on the, the next note is on that page twenty five, talking about the radius of a cul-de-sac. The right of way would be one hundred and forty foot in diameter with a radius of sixty feet. Y'all struck at one in fifty. My concern from other jurisdictions that have had, that people park in the cul-de-sac and that takes a hundred and twenty feet. You got to still keep, you know, turn a fire truck in it. Turn a delivery truck, it's an eighteen wheeler when they're building and stuff. If there's too much obstruction in a hundred foot radius or a hundred foot diameter, it's a problem. So we, we put into the ordinance six. Going on through. On page twenty six, I guess, adjoining subdivision. I can sort of, I, I want to understand what the concern is there. If there is going to be construction, a subdivision that doesn't have through streets, there's no need for that. But if a subdivision is developed in phase one, phase two, the same entrances can be used for the stuff further back, they need to line up. There may be, if it's a separate subdivision, it butts up against an existing, but you don't want any interface between the two. That's something we can work with. But I want to understand what the concern. What pages? Twenty six, two point seven point three. That is struck in its entirety, and I just wanted to make sure I had sort of a, okay, thinking about it. I understand maybe if it was going to be a gated community and you didn't want any access from the next subdivision, simply joint it.
I guess, yeah, I think that would be struck. So we recommend a strike two one dot seven dot three.
Okay. I was out of town and asked my staff to do the red line so that we may have got, have, have a chance to really prove it, I guess. Going down the page.
Page forty seven.
Twenty seven. I think we're okay with the suggestion changes, but possibly you have inserted a ninety five percent standard proper scale. And I think the court was okay, just the sub very compacted by a weighted roller. But if y'all want that standard, I'm just not sure we have the ability to test for that standard. So I, I don't want to adopt a standard that we can't confirm other than to have your engineer or surveyor say it is. Yeah.
I like the sub very should be compacted with a weighted roller. Isn't that more simple than ninety five percent standard proper?
And then up above elasticity index value of six, it remains eighteen rather than forty five. Yeah.
We, we brought it in.
Okay, so is the weighted roller okay?
I'd have to go back and look at it. I, I don't recall all things.
Then for, everyone has to change their thought.
Oh, yeah. AC, AC five, our center bits.
Yeah.
Our understanding from our engineers that he, he recommended deletion of all the references to the full sentence as it is no longer widely available.
Well, we've been using AC five fourteen years. Yeah, so I don't, you know, I'm sure that, that we adjust that somehow if they change the name of it, but it's always going to be pretty much the same consistency.
And I, I'm not an engineer.
Let, let us revisit that with him. The twenty four hour metal setup. Sign it, make according to us. The reference to the flex space and the width of the roadway, we've got in various places, we've got twenty feet, twenty one feet, twenty four feet. We ought to probably come up with a uniform standard, probably twenty four feet be what I think we would wrap in.
Well, really, I think it's a good issue. He, with his whole story of this, how they build roads and how it's here, it's where it's straight. You have no structural temperament to the interior road. But like I said, we're not engineers, so this, this whole section will probably just stick forward and bring an engineer.
So down to page twenty nine, section two point seven point eleven, completion of frigging dam drainage. Here's my concern, it says there should be an exemption to the drainage report department if the proposed subdivision makes no change. How do we know it doesn't without a report? I mean, these, these guys are, have dealt with land and drainage a lot. But, you know, subdivision, that requires a surveyor, a potential engineer to say that it, and if it will, they need to have drainage retention. retention pond or something to avoid altering the natural flow of water. But how do we, how does the court know that a subdivision won't affect the natural drainage without somebody saying?
Well, in fact, I think this goes to a lot of the confusion. This document has written as what is required in a plat versus what is required in an application for a plat. And this may mandate a drainage study for everything. And if a developer submits an application for plat and that application says, well, you're doing no earthwork, you're not doing anything to change the natural drainage, it could go down one branch of a flow chart on checklists. But if they say, we are going to be doing construction, then you may require additional drainage requirements. As written, this applies for everything. And there's no way for the commissioners' court to know until the developer has already incurred the expense. And so instead, having a mechanism where the developer says either yes or no, and if yes, then we provide this, and if no, we don't.
I think that's more simple than in reality most of them are. You put in the streets, you get impervious cover and what might not have been a problem drainage before you had all the street structure in place is now. So I mean, I don't know, just saying that that, the legislature has taken away our ability to do a lot of that stuff as part of the development plans, construction plans. We don't do, we do a plat now, one plat, and it all has to be on there. So that's the legislature. I'm just conforming to what the legislature's told us we've gotta do and do it in thirty days, not sixty. So I mean, I think it's impossible what they tell us we have to do at the time they give us to do it without any more information, they seem to say. So that's the documentation that we require for every plat. I know it's version, but it seems to me that's a requirement. On page, the rock velocity thing, I don't have a problem with that, but if you put those things in, it's gonna need to be engineered. If there's a need for it, somebody's gonna have to look at it. So you need a rock velocity dissipator. That's an engineering requirement, so I'm fine with it. Then get down to the plat approval process that y'all should be consolidated, three and four. This is, if you look at chapter two-thirty-two, oh-two, oh-oh, two-five, I think it is, oh-oh-two-eight-five, the development plan review. This is what the legislature, their wisdom did. They said, in this section, development plan includes a preliminary plat, preliminary subdivision plan, subdivision construction plan, site plan, general plan, development application on site, development plan. Then it says, unless expressly authorized by another law, the county may not require a person to submit a development plan during the plat approval process. So a development plan includes all of the stuff we used to ask for for big subdivisions. I say big, anything more, well, any subdivision that required internal roads, drainage, so forth. We can't ask for that then. So we can only ask for a plat, and on the plat could be multiple pages, but that's what we're trying to do is get the information we need to know, is there gonna be a flooding problem? Is there adequate drainage? Is there adequate road construction? It's all folded into one thing, a plat. So that's my problem, yes?
I'm getting close to them. Now, they're running Dallas. I've got a platform on Dallas, it's been on for years. The city of Dallas approved my plat, but it's on hold until the engineering gets into our hack. Well, many times I think the developers, the engineers, and that's all they've done, but it's a hall. So here, like in Dallas, they're not letting the plats go through until the engineering comes in there, and I'm putting on the plat with the engineering. We start doing that down here, we're gonna start letting them smell.
Let me ask you a question. Here's what the, in the note or the cover letter, it said that you thought there was implied a two. What I, I don't think there is two stages or anything implied. I think what's required is when you've got your plat ready for review, it's got everything that we require for it, you bring that down, we check off the checklist and say, yeah, this is a complete application. Well, if it's complete, if we've got thirty days, unless we find something that's, and if there's something incomplete or we run into something as we get into the thirty-day review that should have been flagged or wasn't for some reason, we have to give you a conditional approval that points out, we're approving the plat subject to these things. And you've got unstated amount of time to fix those. And once you bring back, we have to tell you exactly what it is and what's chapter and verse it is of the regulation that's not being complied with. Once you, you've got, you've got an unlimited amount of time to fix that and bring it back, but once you bring it back, the clock starts again and whatever's left of thirty days when we flag it, when that's, thirty days expires, it's approved by law. And so instead of making you do all these things after you file an application, we don't start the clock until the application is complete. Now, candidly, that requires you to do a plat that's.
There's one or.
Got all that stuff in it.
When it comes to the final, the engineering has to begin when the plat gets filed.
It's gotta be all together. You gotta have your engineering done.
That's all I think for is just not the surveyor. Now the surveyor and on the developer, it's the engineer.
Exactly.
And it's, I've got it. I can do it better than start even.
I understand, but that's what the legislature has required us to do.
Is there some, is there some way that we can talk to them outside of the city to kind of work towards some of these formalities and some of these things without all your organs in your plate? I mean, I know we were trying to talk ourselves into, we're not even close to halfway here and bringing all that sort of pieces of dinner if we don't move along.
Well, here's the problem, I'm not commissioners' court. These guys need to hear your comments, but we have to have a forum somewhere. We can't act on stuff.
God, I understand that, but at this time, don't wait. We're, God, actually, we don't, we want you to read through this.
All right.
And just read through it.
I'll quit discussing, I'll just read through it.
But I don't know how we're gonna get your feedback, how we're gonna be able to do good feedback.
There was an objection that we, an engineer can't sign a surveyor's plat. I understand that, I'm not asking you to do that, but the plat document needs to have a surveyor's certificate and an engineer's certificate on the plat. But engineer's not approving that the surveyors were or vice versa, but commissioners have to have a survey and they need an engineering if there's gonna be any road built, so forth and so on.
I want to see what you're asking me to. You want the engineer to sign and seal it?
No.
That's what it is. What do you want on that, on that model?
Not sign your plat. The engineer has his own certification on the plat that his work is in his certified.
His work doesn't belong to the plat.
You just said you can't approve the plat so it's been engineered.
Engineer does a site plan and develops rate, he signs that because he's from the plat.
Yeah, the state water records, Texas, engineer does on the plat, it's our plat. They don't even put their.
Not on your, not on your survey plat. I'm talking about the plat that's filed with record. Your survey plat is your survey, but the engineering certification applies to the engineering study that he did in addition to that.
Not in the plat records. By the plat.
Oh, that's wrong, that's not what I'm saying. My model copy that's gonna go down on the time pool search, you want a box on there where the engineer's stated everything that has to do with engineering on this document, I'll serve it. Because that's what we ask the engineer, and the engineer said, never heard that? And I'm not signing a plat. That's why I don't want to sign it first and then I can. We don't sign until it's worked.
Well, if the legislature tells us we can't require a construction plan, but we have to have a plat, how about to know, how is this commissioner gonna know that the roads have been built and the drains have been built for it?
Well, what they're asking, apparently, most of you, most of the asking force, we still need those construction plans, whether they're not intended or not, that's what they're still doing. And that's what the engineers' courts do, man, because I know that. But we couldn't have the same word, so I'll call a board and find out if that may be a legislative issue.
I expect it is, but when the legislature tells me what I can't do, I can't do it. I can't approve a plat without having an engineer.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to ask a little part of the gentleman. But I don't think you have a cop out.
Well, it just, it, it goes back to the confusion. There are so many references to this, what is required in a plat that are things that aren't related to a plat. And when what our last engineer is told is, he said, I can't do that. And so, yes, there is very clear regulation on what cannot be required, but the county is empowered to require certain things in regards to the construction. And that is a separate grant power of the county from the requirements of the plat. The plat really only refers to the draw, but the plat refers to the distribution of the property. And there are, there are other things that the county has authority to regulate that would not be properly, all the surveyors, they said it would not be properly included on their plat. The word here for the genetic router, that's it.
Well, I will continue to work with you on that, but I'm hamstrung by, I'd like to visit with your engineer, maybe.
Well, I'd like to see, talk to the engineer for all this information is on that document. I mean, I, obviously, I don't even read it, there's all this.
Well, it's multiple pages, it's multiple pages, it's not the same.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's how my brothers are taking all this, and all, frankly, it's not in private, what not?
They are.
I, I've never, that's, an engineer will take our plat, a lot of agents are talking, they're, they're under time and pursuit.
All right, let me, let me, we've gotta work through. Final engineer in the court, we'll leave that for later date. The note on page thirty-two, talking about the retail utility, that, we've already discussed that, that needs to be reworked. Same with the, on three-point-four, on page thirty-two, the sewage facilities. Again, if they're not available, public service can't do this, accept it. Going over to thirty-three, struck land use intention tracks. What I'm looking for and seeing in others is just a notation of the joint track, whether it's a subdivision, so it's named, but the land use, even internally, if it's gonna be satisfied in a park, it needs to be marked as a park. A lot, it looks like a big lot and it's intended for park purposes, it needs to be identified. If it's a retention pond, needs to be identified. So I'm not sure, we don't want to need that, but on page thirty-four, you struck through the permanent location for all structures, wells. That's just to give notice to buyers that what's there now, you'd be surprised how many people buy lots without going out and inspecting the ground. It's, they never have. So the plat ought to put them on notice to see if that existing structure does cause them to not buy the lot. Streets. Typical lot dimensions, I, I, maybe that's the use typical, each lot dimension ought to be defined in the plat. Take this typical down. Names of roads should be coordinated with the nine-one-one, that was struck, I'm not sure why, but that doesn't seem logical. Land use, I've already talked about. Location of wells, water wells, that's there for buyers aware, type of notice. I would wanna know if there was a cap or a gap well on my property or a gas line. Registered professional. We've already talked about, we're gonna have to get back to the digital map on thirty-five, we already talked about. Application fees, and then we get into the, all of the financial securities have been struck. I don't think we can accept that. I'd like to hear some rationale for that.
I just don't think we're at that level, again, it's the burden and the cost of the type of developments, and we're not good in the type. We're, Antet County is poised for growth, the kind of growth that's coming is not the kind of development that warrants that kind of, that kind of perfection for the county. I mean, it's just not where we are, it's, it's.
Let me play devil's advocate, but say you come in to propose a twenty lot subdivision with an internal road. And you get halfway through it and run out of money, you leave it, you've already sold lots, the plat's approved, you start to sell lots, and you can't finish the road, whatever. If the county doesn't have a bond up to cover and let the county foreclose on the bond, use the bond proceeds, finish the road so that the people can get to their lots they bought, they wait, they, they've lost their investment. I think a bond is mandatory.
As, as written, would you agree that construction of roads has to be completed before the plat's approved?
You gotta, you gotta show us how, what you're gonna do, and you've got two years in which to do it, and we can inspect you and make you do it according to our standards. No, you don't have to cut the roads until, you can't, you know, it doesn't require the roads to be built before you start selling lots, just the plat has to be approved.
And the county director has a set-up process where we're gonna have all the bond, every word, and all of this.
Well, you violate with the county commissioners' court, pay with the county judge.
We've always had this in our subdivision. And so, but we've always waived, you know, so it's, it's nothing to do, it's always been in our subdivision. Just we waived, we waived the process.
Right. And that, and that was, our thing was that it's never been something that's been here to. So, and I feel we're going with that, I understand, I totally understand, I'm actually behind it, I've seen, had a table, so it's just what we wanted to make is if we're gonna do it, do it, if not, can't have. That was kind of, that was kind of what we did.
Well, I can't speak to what's been done in the past. I was asked, help ground an ordinance that is a modern order. And I, I'll be the first to, halfway through the process, the legislature changed the ground. So it's taken longer to get, you know, what the way we've been doing stuff forever has been abbreviated and we, we don't have preliminary plats, we don't have construction plans, we don't, all of that's been taken away and we've been cut half of it. So we've got to get it all upfront. And that's, it loses a moment to make sure that you get started on it, you finish it.
So I totally agree with you. I've seen, I have that in. Sorry, we were requesting five minutes.
Would you, would you agree that if your final plat, or the plat you approved, that the water facility had to be constructed?
I would say that one more time.
Water, water facility. I don't know that you have to have everything completed before it's approved. Some counties do require everything to be built. Some counties do require everything to be built before it's approved.
This is just reading from your text, by the evidence that water facilities and sewage facilities have been constructed and installed. So there's a requirement in here, before the plan is approved, is that, that water sewage, that'd be seven point five of the stuff being. So there's a requirement that says the water sewage has to be done, and then there's another requirement that says you have to put up bonds for your water and sewage facilities that you're constructing. And so, because that is one of the reasons why we thought that these bonding requirements were redundant to the other requirements that were already. And as mentioned, we don't have anybody in the county to monitor these. So that's, to give you some insight as to why we thought that at this time it was premature to adopt such expansive bonding requirements. That is one of the reasons why.
I took the existing ordinance as my starting point and added some sections that I thought needed to be there. The financial security stuff I pretty much took from the existing ordinance. Now, if it says it needs to be completed, we can revisit that, but typically speaking, we couldn't approve the plan at thirty days if we required you to build everything first from the time you apply. So the plan approval process is the, your plan, your, what you're gonna do. And we review it, make sure it's engineered or surveyed right, and then we say, as we can tell, it looks like if you build it, as you say you will, it would be publicly beneficial, say, so forth. Now go build it, and you've got two years to build it, or you can extend it. If you can't get it built in that period of time, but otherwise, you're free to start selling lots once we approve the plan. But if there's language like that, then I didn't catch and read through it, I'll go back, I apologize. Going on, review and approval of final plan. I took this whole new section out of the statute, tells us exactly how we had to do it. And that, down through chapter, well, chapter four through five, I guess, under here, page forty-three to forty-six. That pretty much comes straight out of the statute as it's been revised, so I can, I'm just trying to see if there's a way to, but I don't think I can condense it in part of that. That's what the legislature is focused.
That refers to, there are requirements in chapter two.
And you want it all brought under, you want it all being brought into one, and that's what the checklist was intended to do, rather than try to cram it all into one section. But I could look at that. Time extension, okay, good, division, okay, too. Variance is, I think that's it. But I, I think the bond requirements could be hard to streamline, and maybe, but I, I would be remiss if I told the county they shouldn't have a bond. Whether they're set up now to handle the bond requirement processing, so forth. There's a whole lot of growing up, Antet County is going to have to do if it plans to grow. It will be growing, I'm convinced eventually, it will. But we just got to get our system in place.
We just don't want regulation that's so far beyond where we are driving, that we don't grow.
I hear that, and I'm, and I don't want to argue that.
That's what's been reiterated, it's a possible, possible, possible. If we get to the purpose, my grandchild, I've been doing this, 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 government engineer, also the possible, current client, just that, I see you, also the.
Okay, we can, I pledge that I will work with you the best I can, I will give the court my opinion on stuff. It's their call, I'm not calling the shots, they are. But I, I do think you raise a very valid point, I don't want you to think I'm not sensitive to what you're concerned about. Thank you.
You just have to learn some raps, sum it up, thank you.
And how, and what are your recommendations? Your honor, we made a number of recommendations to the court. We felt that, that overall, the proposed regulations as written were overly regulatory. It, it seems as if every arguable regulation that a county might adopt have, have been included in what was given to the court. And I'm not aware of any potential regulation that's lawful, that's, that's omitted from this. I think this is, this is every possible rule that could be adopted, and some that, you know, I think we kind of glossed over here today. The document is originally drafted, it reports to adopt a setback line for every piece of property in the county. And I don't know if that's what was intended, but I know that the statute requires that notice of that be published in that public area. There is regulations on whether you can have rubber hoes and metal hoes on your grill. And I don't know where the authority for the county has been granted. You know, one of the things that we asked, or recommended, was that someone else take, take a look at this. And, and come at it not from, we've got, we've got this document, and how can we tweak it, but we want to keep most of it as is, and really, really look at this because it's a law. I mean, this is, this is what's going to govern development in the county. And, and as written, there are, there are provisions that conflict with each other, there's a lot of repetition that can cause additional conflict. And so, I think, I speak to myself, I'm very encouraged by our process so far, but, but I, I just hope that the commissioner's court ha- has received our feedback in, in the manner that's intended, which is to be collaborative. We want to work, work to help, and we're just concerned citizens and people that professionally are going to be impacted by the rules. And we want them to be good for the future development of this county. We don't want this to, you know, be a place that people don't want to live. But we want to foster the same growth that we're in in, in a productive way, and with rules that would be easily and fairly applied when there's a change in membership in the town. So I think that, that sums up really well, and I, I just want to say to myself, I really appreciate all of y'all being here today and providing us to give our feedback.
Yes. Do I have phone numbers for you?
I'll make sure.
So is that, uh, your role? I don't, how, how do you, how do you like?
Well, I mean, we, we would like, of course, the timeframe that we asked for it, we'd like to make further recommendations and continue to, to work, you know, try and figure out how to deal with some of this. I hear the answer to, it seems like most everything, well, that's the law. We're not applying to announce, I don't know what, I mean, I mean, I just don't see how we make that big, I don't know how we, how we avoid it for everyone, it's vast, but at the same time, there's got to be some way to work with that, other than just saying that's the law, and it's, you know, dumping all of that on us. Because that, that doesn't work for the county to fix that. So I, I would think that if you could prescribe something to how we go forward, well, you gave us wisdom on how to go forward with our advisor committee, we did that. You could, if you could prescribe something again, I think we'd be happy to hear that and adhere to it.
What do you think, if I could just ask, would you think if we bracket the rules for subdivisions of various sizes, a tier approach?
Well, the, I mean, the tier, the tier thing is one thing that, that, you know, we touched on that a little while ago. I mean, I think if you get that, that four lots off of the parent, you know, you don't like that language, but like, having better. You know, you bypass a lot of things, and it's not that that does not have regulation. That definitely does have something, it has the bare basis of what people need to have, make sure there's utilities, make sure it's not floods up, and so forth. And so, we want to be, we want those.
Same counties that have tiered regulations. But they typically, you know, once you get past that four, like, it gets.
Well, and that's, and that's, I kind of, if you're interested to talk about this, it's both, we're going to hammer this like two. I'm trying to keep that guy when I hear him score. And we all live here, or most of us live here, but we work here, we have best interests in this county, in a good crisis. But when we're just talking about small, most of these, most of these are small, one, two, three, four, track deals, you know, hundred. Yeah, they're, they're, if you're talking about, like, you said, about, I could call a mile plate. And I'm, and we're not trying to overburden somebody in this community with this. We sure, I'm not bringing in these school engineers who are dressed for, you go from million, to a thousand dollars, ten dollars. And also, the, they just aren't going to work, the land is, so.
So, I'm sorry, I'm willing, but a lot of the other, a lot of other subdivisions don't require roads. And I think if it doesn't require a road, that, that's a.
It's a couple of tiny footprints that, that are infrastructure, we build roads, parks, and now we'll pass all this and go down here.
Yeah, so I mean, that's. That's a big, yes, there is not a road, so I think there are.
They might just get past that. That's kind of what we were thinking, our thinking was when we were talking last night. If you're not going to be in the structure, I'm saying by the process of not making little parts.
And I, I'm not opposed to that, too, if it needs, I don't want people building in floodlines, I don't try, you know, we don't need it, yeah. Okay, well, this, I appreciate, I do appreciate y'all. It's hard for anybody to carve out three hours.
We've all been kidding.
Yeah.
We're timed.
Yes, but I appreciate it, we will continue to work with you, like I say, we need a subdivision regulation in this county, growth is coming. That's right. And so, but we don't want to stop the growth, we want, growth is good.
That's right.
Under, substandard development is bad, so that's all we're trying to do.
Follow on our, it was Mr. Wes who represents the court on this, and then we'll get into Mr. Grant, and we'll notify you what we're going to do, if we want, we won't pressure you, we're not going to set something in law, we're going to give you plenty of time to look at this, and then we'll have another meeting, and then we'll make sure that we're all fairly in agreement on different things before we actually study, we heard for approval.
And I want to, this is, you've been pointing on, you want to have another siblings, you hear those recommendations that are in here, come up with, as far as that whole thing, that, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I know, and he was telling us stuff that I didn't have.
Yeah.
I'm not an engineer, but you're making perfect sense, it's a low game, start with this.
Well, I would say for the sake of, you know, if we do it, if we can get Cory to comment on that, listen to what he had to say, I thought the other engineers, it's kind of hard to find an engineer that'll dedicate the special time. And Cory, Cory seems, even though he's not here this morning or something, he would be, he seems to be willing to try and put more time, so I would like to say for with him, if that, that makes sense. I don't know if you're familiar with Cory, but he's done some work for, for a couple of us here, and if we, on a front end, basically, we'd send the light and trust him, and think that he has good advice.
He's just visiting, I guess, I always have a business marketing, so.
I have a, I have my recommendation for this. Commissioner Wes, I look over at what we talked about today. Will it rise to full court, what we can do? We'll get into vast, we'll set another tangent. In the meantime, will you have some way to kind of clarify?
I would like to interface with you.
No, that's, well, that's.
Just, 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 and call to both of you and try to get, you know, I, to say I have no pride of ownership, which probably isn't correct, I do some shit, but I certainly, these things have been kind of pieced together, so I mean, I'm terribly willing to.
Can I ask you one question, and I, I, I can probably assume the answer, but this legislature might not make any distinction about county size or county.
You want me to tell you what goes on with the legislature? Well, it's already passed one. Counties have stood up to the governor and the lieutenant, and the speaker on trying to cram down tax laws. And we've defeated them for the last three sessions, and they're pissed off about it. So they screw with us every chance they get, it's any pot. And we got screwed on this deal, they ran, they steamrolled us. We kept saying, we can't do what you're telling us to do.
Yeah.
And they said, screw you, you stood up and stopped us in imposing what we think is good for whole Texas. The people who run for office and don't let the federal government come in and tell you what to do, as soon as they get to Austin, they want to tell you what to do, they love it.
Amen.
And I'm, I'm sick of it, and when these guys come to Austin to testify about what their real world is about, they're treated like crazy.
He does, that's true.
And so, we're tired of it, but they scram it down on us. And I don't like it, I think it's wrong, but what am I supposed to do?
I hear, I hear you, but to, to also point, these regulations aren't mandatory. The only things that are mandatory are the exempt regulations, commissioner's court has to spread it with regulations.
Yeah, I agree with you.
That's a, that's a noteworthy point.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I don't want, but it's, at the same time, guys, I mean, I've been places where the rules weren't adequate.
I understand.
And so, I don't know where the line is for each county. All I know to do is to start out with the regulation and minnow it down, this is not uncommon.
Well, that's one thing, I think that with the, with the committee, I think it'd be fair to say that they probably sense where that line is as well or better than anybody else, because we're, we're out in it every day, we work in it every day. And so, that's one reason we so appreciate the opportunity to have input, and.
The people that I'm worried about are in this.
I, I understand that, too, and when we, when we sat down, one of the first things we said is we've, we've got to not only do what we think, you know, works for us, but we've got to make sure that the county has some protection for the inscrupulous guy that comes in and all he wants to do is quit, but can leave, he's going to leave a ton of problems behind, everybody else to deal with.
I believe one of Rob Hoover is it. I'm, Hoover, he's one of the most guys who's proved property rights.
Yeah, I'm, no, that's what I'm saying, I really sincerely appreciate you guys coming in, because we don't, we recommend always to do this, not in every county has interest, folks are willing to give their time to do it. It's prob, it's probable that there are regulations adopted that may, could have been worked out better, but we don't get that feedback. And then, by the same token, we pass, counties have rules and regulations that have demonstrated their weaknesses by not being able to protect the public.
Like, the bottom line is, is we're, we're, we're not rushing, we're moving around that, but we've got to get there.
I, I.
I think that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I hear you, and we, we want to get there, too.
Otherwise, two years from now.
That's right. Well, what I was close with. What I, what I was close with is just that, you know, if we don't, if we have zero risk, we're going to get zero return. I think that's kind of the bottom line, so I think that, that we have to come up with.
So I think that we have to come up with regulations that will be perfect as far as guarding the county, any potential problem. But at the same time, hopefully, we can come up with something that works for the county and for the people of the county.
Thank you.
Oh, here we go. Copy this check, Lee.
You know, I do not have a card on me. So thank you for. And your position is different, you know, you're respectful.
Yeah, I understand. But anyway, hopefully, it's a play everybody needs to hear about.
You want to make a reasonable profit off a property.